Okay, let's start it. All meeting to order in a several. Welcome everybody. Okay. I just. That's kind of official. Any comments? Corrections? None can I get a motion? I mean, can I get a vote? Can I get a vote all in favor? Okay. And then did everyone have a chance to look at the annual meeting minutes that we don't officially approve, but we just review them while we might remember what happened instead of a year from now? Any comments, questions, changes? So. Moving right along. Those here, okay. Let's get this started. Right, so we will move right into the director's report.
Do you want to also look at April meeting minutes? Did the annual meeting?
I thought the first one was April.
Oh, okay.
And the second, the other one, we don't actually do a looking for, we just review it. And then we decided somebody has working. What, the April?
Yeah.
You do.
No, I thought that was about in the agenda.
Oh geez. Sorry. You're right, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm confused. It's me, it's not me.
I'm editing.
All right. I'm all in favor. Who wants somebody who knows what she's talking about? I don't know if that's going to be the case, but. Uh, upcoming Lego program or Lego.
This is not a good stretch.
Uh, upcoming library programs, we were supposed to have Lego club today, but no, shut up. Because it was a beautiful day and then it started raining. Uh, we're supposed to be doing book club for kids on Monday, book club for adults on Tuesday, teen night on Friday, baby cafe on Tuesday. The big thing we have coming up is um, Sadie has asked if she can do a program for us and we're doing masterpieces and mocktails. So it's a paint and sip um, without the alcohol. But she's very excited, she's got some friends who are going to help teach the class. And she's, we're going to have hors d'oeuvres and we're going to have mocktails and she's, it'll should be a fun time. So we already have, I think, about eight people signed up. So if you know anyone who wants to sign up, we have them use it.
Share limit.
Uh, maybe twenty is what I was going to have, but I doubt.
It's an article?
Uh, acrylic, we're going to do it. Well, please join us, it would be, hopefully it will be fun. Uh, we're doing chair yoga, we're doing um, another gardening program, the power of purple with Chris again. So we'll be doing that in June. Uh, Jen is doing CPR classes, I should have put both of them in there, but I didn't. Um, and we are doing a bubble party for our summer reading kickoff program. That's going to be on Tuesday, June twenty fourth, hopefully at four thirty. But I think we're going to block off part of the uh, parking lot and we will have the whole bubble party with the kids and I'll be doing some color bubble painting that we can do with them too, because it's one fun thing to do. And I just scheduled via aquarium to come, so they will be here on the thirtieth of June. So I'm trying to get as much, uh, we're trying to get a bunch of different things scheduled and then I'll be starting on the July calendars. Um, crafting circle is still going and seems to people are enjoying it. We're still doing storytime, still going strong and so.
You're doing better than previous time.
Yeah, I think it's. I don't know, I think they're working, well, they're working on a longer project, so it's one project per month. So they did felting for one month, they're doing needlepoint this month and everyone brings their stuff with them and they just sit and they, they enjoy it, so it's cool. Um, and it seems like people are wanting to come in because I did the origami lanterns and I did um, not origami, but paper flowers and people really were enjoying that, we had a good time with those, so. Seems like everyone wants to try and get out a little bit of stuff, so it's been good. But you can see all of our numbers. Our programming attendance is still going up strong, our homeschool programs uh, still huge. Uh, I think we had thirty, was it thirty-seven, thirty-seven at the last one with the sheriff's department. Cheryl said it went really well. They have a great turnout for that. So on, actually I forgot to say on, in June, on June first, uh, the fire department will be here for the, for the homeschoolers doing fire safety and then the families have decided they want to do a barbecue afterwards, so we're going to have, Cheryl's going to bring her barbecue over and they're going to have picnic, so.
That's nice.
I thought that was nice too, yeah. So. Hopefully that'll go well.
Got to be done safely.
Yeah, well, the fire department will be there, so hopefully. If we really need them. We just leave the truck carefully. Well, there's enough water back there that I think will be. Um, if you can see, our circulation is about the same as it was last year and the year before, we're pretty much staying, staying where we normally are. Um, our visits a little bit lower than last year, but higher than the year before, so it doesn't, you know, we're kind of evening out on all of this stuff. It's been busy though, it feels like it's been busier, people are steadily coming in is what it seems like at least, so. Our registered patrons, it looks like we had a little bit of a jump or um, bump down in patron numbers and I have a feeling a whole bunch of people just had their library cards to expire, so I'm going to work on a new mailing to go for that, um, to try and bump that back up again. So, let's see, we did, we now have um, for new patrons, we have seventeen adults, one out of system and six kids. So that's, that's a good number for twenty-five. Uh, can see our collection development, put in a whole bunch of stuff this year or this month for juvenile fiction because I was able to get um, very cheap kids books for uh, from Junior Library Guild, so they were all six dollars a book, so I got ten books for, no, I think I must have gotten nineteen books. Or somewhere around there for like very cheap, so that was fantastic. Alright, so we had our staff meeting on April twenty-fifth, everyone was there, was good to get everyone together, we are actually staying on track with once a month, that's really good. Easter party went really well, the biggest thing I heard was that people were really happy to see that Easter egg happened again. So, kudos. That was, people were very happy with that. I don't know if you can see, but in the pictures on the bottom, you can see um, Chance right there in the red, like flying out of the group to try and get his. I thought that was cute. Um, the scholarship application is available, it's on the website. I've emailed all three of the schools, I only heard back from New Lebanon. We'll see who and how, if anybody actually does it, the applications due next Friday. But this always happens, always, and I'll give them the weekend and then we'll probably get two more or three more and we'll see where it goes from there. So, once I get it, I'll do the whole like, you know, marking everything, like redacting everything and then send it all to everybody and you guys can just tell us which, who. I did speak to um, the accountant regarding the cleanup of our old accounts and QuickBooks, they were able to correct all mistakes, update everything, so now everything that we have in QuickBooks matches what we have on our taxes and on um, in our bank accounts and our credit card accounts. So we are officially up to date. Uh, everything's completely accurate, so that was really good to see happen. We did meet with Patty and Jen to go over the accounts and the changes that were made and Patty and you know, just kind of walked us through some of the other things and it definitely was um, another good experience to, to learn some of the more stuff, so. Um, I'm continuing to update the website, if you look at the website now, the newest thing that I have on here is that I put up, um, our annual statistics are now available, you can see those, which those are the, New York State requires those be available to the public. Um, I also have a link to how much is your library worth, kind of fun to see like, well, how many books do you take out and how much money you're saving and then a link to the scholarship. Um, library calendar, which I was just messing around with today, um, is not live yet, but will be live in June. So it will be, library calendar is something that we'll be paying a small amount, I think it's two hundred dollars a year, but it is so much easier than doing the library calendar that I do currently. It also links us up to every other library in the Upper Hudson system, so people can look and say, okay, well, maybe Berlin I would want to go to today, or you know, so you can choose which libraries you want to go to. Or they could just have it stay on Steamedown, which is mine too. We can't, yeah, I can look at that, I mean, there's not a lot of that happening, but you know, it definitely will help to be able to see where, you know, okay, if Berlin's having their storytime on Thursdays, maybe we can not, it's that kind of thing, but yeah, it also offers um, registration and it offers um, so I won't have to normally now what I do is I go in, I make the event, then I make a registration form, then I take that link and I put it into the event and then I have to take that link and put that into all of the other places that we have the library calendar. And it's a huge time suck, I need it, this way it will be, it's right there, everything's there and for whatever reason, our calendar currently doesn't let me duplicate events. So every time, yeah, so I'm making a separate event for Mahjong sixteen times for once, or a separate event for storytime. You're very worth it, absolutely. But. So um, yeah, so this will be, this will be a great, this is a great investment for us, I'm really happy that we're going to do it. So Upper Hudson, um, will have it hopefully up and running by sometime in June, I don't know what the date is. Um, okay, kids room. That's the biggest thing that's happening right now. We have been, I did sign, so Scott, I did get the information from the architects, I now have the, they've got the certificate of insurance and all that other stuff, I signed the contract and it has been sent to MR2, so hopefully we're going to do that. Uh, construction kickoff meeting is planned for Monday at nine AM and wants to join us, welcome. We're going to meet, I did get in touch with Rodden, he's going to meet up there too, so he can talk to our techs about moving our server and all the bad other technicalities and then um, I did try and contact John Laporta about the heat pump stuff, so he could be here too, but I haven't heard back from him. Um, we met with Joanie and Megan about the, where we're layout of the room as well as looking, I'm just going to pass this around if anyone wants to see. Um, we picked out a couch, or it's called a chair and a half, you know, little couch, um, and we picked out, we did pick out um, a small table, round wooden table with wooden chairs that have colors on the backs, they're really cute. So we're going to go with those things. We have a lot of other things that we need to figure out in terms of um, shelving and one of the things that we looked at doing is having bench seats underneath the windows, which we're going to try and do. And then also do um, in one of the corners, having it kind of like a toddler area with a bench and then cubbies underneath. Um, one of the things that I was most concerned about was making sure that we're not decimating our collection by doing all of this and then not having space for all of our books and everything. And we, that's why all the bread is also because she was, we went through and measured everything to make sure that we're not. So, so far so good, so, yeah, we should have enough space, yeah.
Um, the benches under the windows, I mean, free standing?
When, um, window bench, like window seats, so built in, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we'll see how it goes. Um, so yeah, so it should be, uh, it should be good, we're kind of moving, chugging forward, I guess, so. Um, the big thing that needs to happen now is that everything in the kids' room needs to move in here. Um, I've already started. So I, I, today, I, so actually um, before we leave, if you want to check out the closet, I have to say I'm very proud of myself for that. Not to cheat my own horn, but we got everything out of the art closet and moved everything into here, consolidated, got rid of stuff that was not necessary to have anymore. Um, so that closet is now nice and neat and clean, these two shelves came from the art closet. Um, they're very solid shelves, I'm surprised that I, I, they, I never thought that they were going to work, I thought they were just ratty old shelves, but they do. So these two shelves give us the extra space to be able to fit everything from in there in here, except for six, nine shelves of um, children's books. But those are out, I put those already and in the new section, so we already have, I already moved some stuff, I've already moved DVDs, we've moved all DVDs and then those things for the children's room. So if I could get help moving all of that stuff, the books, it shouldn't take that long because I have four carts that will be able to, you know, just keep circling back. That would be great, I'd love to do it if we can have it um, done this weekend sometime, just because I'd like to be almost finished with everything by Monday when they're going to come and start doing the, looking at what we have done. And I would rather do it when we're not open versus when we are open, so we're not bothering patrons. So, and that's what I was thinking, is anyone available on Sunday to help?
Available.
Okay.
I'm available.
Um, Jen said she's in the afternoon, available in the afternoon. Okay.
So, I could do that obligation.
Okay, would noon work for everybody?
Yeah.
For anyone? Okay, so noon would be great, I'm going to, Richard has a um, a place to get rid of our books that we don't need anymore, so I'm going to go through those tomorrow. Um, everybody, I, I'm shocked because this, this shelving unit was chock full of books. People have been absolutely loving coming in and getting free books, so I'm going to keep what's still good. We'll get rid of what's not good, um, because we still need to be able to feed the little library as well. So we'll keep it and then we'll keep doing a little like free to, free store kind of a thing, so people can keep coming and taking, I'd rather that they take the books than have them sit on the shelf and never go anywhere. Um, Sunday if you can, if not, then I, well, I can have everything. Someone's throwing you under the bus. Well, actually, I mean, I'll have all of that, I'll have all of this boxed up by tomorrow afternoon. Okay. Okay. Okay, fantastic, thank you, that'll be great.
Thanks.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Eight drawn books away, but.
Going to do it sometimes, that's. And some of them are just not in good shape anymore and if they're not in good shape, then.
Yeah, and any of the library fiction, no.
Those seem to be the ones that are going the most, so I'm going to keep, we'll hang on, on to some of them and keep it from there. Better World books, they still are around, um, but after scanning all of those books, they never used to take anything and then when you really looked at how much we were making, I think we made like twelve dollars a year, so it was not worth it. So, yeah, we stopped. Um, although I know, I think the Albany, one of the Albany branches still has a Dropbox for Better World books, so. You can, if anyone wants to get rid of books, you can go up to Albany, come from there. Who wants to drive all the way up there? Okay, so that's pretty, so great, so thank you so much, Sunday will be great, I will be here at noon, I will have as much stuff as I can ready to just be moved so that I'm not. No, that's one thing I still have plenty of because Better World Books gives you, gave us cartons of fifty bucks. So I still have like a hundred boxes upstairs, so we're good. Yep, no, we're good for boxes. Um, I've also been saving boxes too, just being around. Um, I wanted to let everyone know, I didn't put this on the agenda because it just got this today. The Upper Hudson annual celebration is happening this year, it's in Troy, it's on our side of the river and um, it's going to be on June eleventh at five thirty. If I'm right, normally the way it is is they do like hors d'oeuvres and drinks and stuff, right, is that what we're doing this year again? It's usually a really nice night and then, you know, they do presentations and it's their annual meeting, so if anyone wants to join, it's forty dollars per person. And I need to have the RSVB to Jana by June third, so I can, I'll send, I have an email of this, but I'll send it to everybody. Um, but if we spend them all together, whoever wants to go is they like it if we send it all together, so.
Is anyone going to be there?
You know, I don't know. No. Yeah, I'm not sure, and retire.
Just retire, retire.
Yep. Yeah, he says he's not going to go get into anything else, but that's, yeah. Everybody, you know, yeah, exactly. A new director, executive director has been hired too, Chris, is it Chris? Seagus, so. I think it was the beginning of June is what I read somewhere, but yeah, so there is a new, so maybe at some point he'll be making the rounds to meet everybody, so um, seems like a great guy, but, and, yeah. Very, so. Um, and then the only other thing is, is I have a uh, Historical Society is having a planning committee for the country's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary next year. They want to invite one or two representatives from each organization to participate, funny I'm going, they're having a brainstorming meeting on May twenty-first at seven, so if anyone wants to join, you're welcome to join me. I'll pass this around to you, look at that. And I think, I'm making sure that.
No problem. How are you doing, it's very, very, um, you have all the stuff, construction stuff, wrapping it up?
Um, it, it's getting there. I'm, I've been able to actually, um, I've been teaching the staff a little bit more about how to use Sierra, so they're helping out with a lot more things, so it's definitely been, you know, helping and people want to give a hand, so.
Right.
Yeah, so, and everyone's coming up with, like with Sadie coming up with programming and um, Cheryl coming up with programming and everybody's definitely pitching in, so.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, we'll move on to the president's report.
I brought a separate, uh, my keys be retrieved, brought you down. While I sent it there, I know what I did for the Hudson sale. All the same information, just. So, just to give you an idea of where we're at with the money that went into the CD in October, we took uh, thirty thousand on a special project, uh, thirty-five thousand out of uh, money market and then I believe it was fifteen thousand, that's right, out of the uh, scholarship account. So we put the money back into the special projects account when we cashed in the TV in, in April. And we left the rest of it in the money market regular savings account, which we're getting two point nine percent interest right now. Um, we closed out the Zook account, I have to go actually physically go over to Rod and kill it. Uh, hopefully do that tomorrow. Well.
We don't do any of it.
So the, the, the question is, do we want to put the money back into the scholarship account or just leave it in the money market with the best interest?
So we've been going around and.
Yeah, Jen's been sending me emails saying, you know, this or that or this or that. Yeah, I, I, see what's, oh god.
I'm going to go in the parking lot and hear a break.
Well, I, I didn't.
So my concern is less, my concern right now is making very clear to anybody who looks at our, the public who looks at our finances, what this money is, because right now it looks like, jeez, you guys are sitting on a pile of cash, like, what's the deal? Why do you need more money? Uh, it looks like you have plenty of money, so I want to be able to make it crystal clear and Richard, ri- very rightly set me straight on, on one path of this, but uh, I don't think we need to necessarily create or move the money out of the accounts themselves. I think keeping things in the uh, account that has the best interest rate is smart. I just think on our reporting, we need to be able to clearly designate, because that money in that regular savings, we, that's, that we've got deferred revenue in there for the DLD grant, we've got the request in there, we have the Stewarts, you know, if we have everything in there, basically there's no extra money. At the end of the day, that and our extra operating income that's in there is, is a wash, you know, so I just feel like that needs to be clear, that we don't, we're not sitting on a pile of. Yeah, exactly. Exactly, and. Right, right, and so I, I, in that email, in, in one of the emails, I broke out how I think we need to uh, delineate that so that we can just clearly.
So that's where you want the renovation, not in the special project.
Right, I'm okay if we don't, if we're not, I, I want the money, so the, under the account where it is, it needs to show where. Right. So couldn't, do we have to put the balances on into the public, can't we use our QuickBooks account? Because once you have QuickBooks, that's where it's all joined. You know, right now, I mean, it's, you know, it's very um, deferred inter, you know, deferred revenue, all of that stuff is in the QuickBooks account. So, I don't know what we have to, like what's the stuff that we have to legally show, could we just do this? No one reads it anyway, but still, with, but with a four fourteen, that would be our balance sheet.
Right.
That's what we have to, and, and that is, that is now completely up to date, so.
But we need to clear out those, um, we still need to clear out the uh, we, uh, hold on. We're going to cover all this in one discussion. Uh, we need to clear out the assets. Um, so right now we have, Patty recommended that we have, and I don't have a hand on this, we haven't finished doing this, but we have a listing of assets that includes equipment um, that right now um, basically should at this point just be uh, cleaned out, cleaned up. We don't have a list of this equipment, it is nothing more to carry on, same with furniture and things like that. So we do still have a little bit of cleanup to do on the, uh, just trying to make sure it hasn't been, because I know it did something.
We'll take you wherever, I'm sorry, um. I don't think it hurts to be able to show our, you know, when we're looking at this, what's in the accounts, that's part of uh, our, our fiscal responsibility is to look at what our bank account balances are.
Yeah, you don't want to put this out on the website.
Well, they do.
There every month. Yep, all of our board meetings here, you know, that are regular.
We could just make an Excel document and change it. We can fill in the numbers every month, that's not a hard thing to do either.
Because I think what this also helps us, we, what we need to be able to look at is to know, like actually right now, you know, what's sort of like a cash flow thing, you know, if we project out what the rest of our expenses are that for the, for the year, that we actually have that money in the account that, and designated for that purpose, you know what I mean? Um, or I should say, money that is not designated for other purposes, that's essentially what I'm trying to say, I guess.
So equipment's been zeroed out, furniture and fixed assets have been zeroed out. Um, yeah, all of that, the, the only thing that we have right now listed is our business assets, our building assets. Well, the building and the land. Everything else is, is uh, been zeroed.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah, but I think it gets lost on us as well, if we don't have it.
Oh, no, you could, I mean, we've got on our emails, um, basically our monthly budget, well, it would show columns.
Basically, our monthly budget, well, you could show in columns. What your anticipated operation expenses through the end of year are. And line them up the same way. So basically you see the money in the bank. Also what the anticipated.
Right, yes.
Year end.
Right.
Which. The, you know, obviously you'll have reserve count of counts, but those are. Appropriately money in the reserve account.
Right.
I'll use. One way to present it. There is one way I'm getting into it, whatever you call it. And I haven't, I go into those reports and they're shit. I'm trying to figure out how I can do this with a annual budget next to it. But every time I do that, it comes up with these are monthlies or whatever.
It's just a matter of the settings.
I, I, I tried the settings. I've tried like January to May and all that. And it just, I cannot get it to do a. You know, profit and loss up to this and then next to the budget. I haven't been able to figure.
You have to choose year to date for everything, for each. You have to choose year to. Or no, sorry.
An hour yesterday.
Sorry, I was wrong. You have to choose annual. Um.
I'll, I'll have to do a tutorial with you.
Okay. What?
Well, it was very frustrating because every time I tried to do it, it would say, oh, here we go. Here's your January year to date, February year to date, March year. That's not what I wanted. I just wanted the budget thing. At one point I thought, well, I'll just take the budget and I'll just enter it and scroll back.
No, I.
I'll, I'll sit down with you and you can show me how to do it for future. Because that's exactly what you're talking about, Scott, is our current expenses. Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, I get you.
We've already.
No, no, I get, I get you. No, and it, it's no, no, no harm, no foul, no, no, no offense taken.
We've already budgeted, or we've already, we budgeted thirty two hundred dollars for interest, but we've already made twenty six.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of that kind of stuff going on that we could show. But I haven't figured out how to. Do it on the same page for easy review.
I'll show, I'll. I'll show you. It's, it's super easy. It's just a matter of.
I kind of take it inwards. I just didn't have the magic.
Okay.
So we'll work on that for next month.
Yeah.
All right, awesome. So we kind of.
Now, and also on the broad group balance, do you want us to break out how much of the, the hundred, two hundred thousand is for renovation?
Okay.
Okay, so what is the exact amount of that?
Well, why don't we do that off?
Okay. Yeah.
I have a spreadsheet that I've started already.
That's okay. In, so next month, when I have, when I create this, I'm, uh. They're in a path this year. I didn't send it to her. Then it's true.
So Richard, was there anything else notable, uh, in terms of, you know?
No, not really. It seemed like pretty much everything was tracking along. Didn't think the entries were really nice, probably six or seven dollars. Um. Everything else seemed to be pretty much in line. Of course, we got a nice little bump from that fundraising people. Much appreciated. And, uh, everything else went pretty much in line.
All right. Anybody else have any other question for Fox? All right, so we will move along to committee reports to the very exciting fundraising. First of all, I think a round of applause just for everyone who wants to.
Absolutely.
Um, so I just wanna jump down to, and we'll go back to the trivia. So we haven't met yet since we talked about trivia. So I just put some ideas that we were thinking about, but we haven't really talked. Too much about them. Um, but we were thinking trivia again in November, um, doing the bingo in winter. And I do have. A couple of people that do it at SMS that will do it for us. So. We're not gonna have to do much, like they'll, they'll kind of run it. So it'll be an easier one for us. Um, Sarah and I talked about possibly doing some kind of barbecue fundraiser over this summer. And I did, you had thought and information about Brooks, but I printed out. Um, which I can pass around if anybody, again, we haven't really talked too much about it. And then there's another one that's more local. It's, it's called Miller's. It's in Cohoes. So I've been emailing with the guy a little bit about that. So pass those around if you wanna look at those. Um. Another thing. Music that we get more.
We can try that. Um, the only thing is that we're, we're not putting the, the tent up this year. So.
Do you know the dates? Do you know the dates for the music?
No, I haven't done music in a couple of years now because it's been so wet back there that I can't really, and people stopped coming. But if we make an event where, you know, local people are playing or whatever, we can definitely make that. That will, will draw people in. I think it was the every week thing that people weren't into.
Maybe like if you were thinking, I don't know what you're thinking, but. Were you thinking like doing it a couple of times, like once a month over the summer or you weren't?
Possibly I haven't gotten there yet.
Haven't gotten that far. Yeah, we're not really that far either with, with what we were thinking, but. Yes, Sarah had suggested maybe coordinate that. So.
I think that'd be great.
Do it and just whatever their sales.
So basically, if you take a look at this. My bad. The Brooks one, did you take a look at that?
I did, I did notice that we just make it into their, um, service area.
Oh, okay, good, extra.
Um. You do have to have people helping out with the.
So we would have to work at it, basically.
Making the food like we did for thirty. It would be a lot less work. And if it wasn't whole ground like Brooks or. Could as well, you know, it really does attract people and, um, I think we could make pretty good money.
How do we, like, how do we make the money on it?
This is what I guess. We pay them the fixed price and then anything above that goes to us.
Okay.
So according to Miller's, and I, I looked over that one. I didn't look at it real closely. So I guess they would. Like. We do pre-order. Like there's a pre-order and if it's, there's a two hundred minimum for onsite cooking. Two hundred, um. Meals. But if it's less than that though, it, which it's, um. They cook everything and they drop everything off and then it's basically our responsibility. To, it's all kind of set, but we kind of just have to put it together. Um, but what I'm not, and they supply everything. What I'm not a hundred percent sure about though is how, cause I was thinking. If, especially if we're coordinating it with the music, there's gonna be people who aren't gonna pre-order. We would wanna have. More or extra.
More than the pre-order.
More than the pre-order, like, and that would be something we have to kind of hammer out, like, how much would we get more to pre-order? Cause obviously we don't wanna lose money.
But if you want it, you can.
That might answer.
You know, if we marketed it well, we could probably get a sense on the pre-order where we are. And then we know we're gonna have walk-ins and it would be just.
Yeah.
In that way, I get the last one if you want to. People, but, um. It does seem like it, it could be kind of. Not that much work.
Yeah, definitely not that much work. Compared to the others. So there was that. And then we kind of talked a tiny bit about maybe doing a brunch potluck, but not the one for new residents. Um, just because we haven't done anything like that in a long time. And I mean, this wouldn't be a big moneymaker. But if we did have like a suggested donation, just because it would be a potluck, but, you know, we'd still be supplying. Space, the coffee, like stuff like. So. Yeah, but, but maybe suggested donation. Um. The wine tasting event, did you wanna talk about? I know we haven't really talked, but you had.
Uh, yeah, I just threw it out there. I'm not sure if it would be something we could really afford. Uh, I, I mean, it probably depends on where. And if you want it to be local enough, that people will. You know, the connection with the scene and sound, but, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't have enough people on it.
Okay. Something.
Could be cool. And also something that we wouldn't. Work for because we were there to taste the wine. The, the, um, winery gets the benefit of people buying their wine if they like. What they're tasting, um, and we get the benefit of charging them for the. The ability to be there and taste a lot.
Would it be something if even if like a relatively small group of people did it, would it still? Be lucrative for us or I'm just not really?
No, I think we have to have big, not an amount, not huge, but, you know. About it.
Okay, but we'll, we'll talk more about.
Yeah, I, I, I have no details.
Okay. And then the last thing on there was, um, we had talked about this a few times too. Doing a breakfast sandwich fundraiser, which would be fun relatively. I say relatively easy, but, but that would be lying if I said that. I think it would just have to be very organized. Um, I've been talking to many about it a bit too, so it would be out of order to help with that. But again, we have to do a bit more about that. Um, and if anybody has any other ideas fundraisers, that would be great. Um.
So it sounds like if we're, um. If you're, if the barbecue thing, you're looking for that for summer, that's the next one to focus on.
Yeah.
And it's really be a different approach for us. I mean, I think some of those. You know, chicken barbecues that the different fire departments do and the drive-through pickup, I mean, they seem to be successful. Um. I, I don't know. Um.
Didn't they do one?
Yeah.
But it's, it's well, I like it because it's literally at dinnertime. I drive through it. I have to pre-order. I get what I need and I drive out. It can be different every time I go. I don't know how much they have left. You know what I mean? At the end, sometimes they get like a line of traffic and sometimes they're out there with the chicken. Trying to pull people in, you know.
Who's gonna wear the chicken?
Uncertain, right, so. Yeah, we have.
So sponsorship?
I don't know. Yeah, that's family.
Yeah, okay.
But Miller's, seeing Miller pretty much to go to.
Yeah.
They all say. No, I, I, I'm from Texas. I don't care. I can't.
I love.
They, they use both.
Oh, okay.
Cheryl, Sarah.
Gotcha.
The other thing I can bring to is DPS did a barbecue fundraiser and I can reach out to some friends that. They did that. They did a great barbecue fundraiser and it was pre-order and people just swing by at dinnertime and pick it up between like four and six. But it seemed to do decent amount that they did it once a year, um, for families. And so it's, that seemed a lot. Simpler than maybe hosting like a whole event of just like. Hey, you know, there's not a lot of restaurants around here, so it's like that's something different to like pick and go. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. But maybe that would increase the amount.
So I think we also probably need to look at, do a comparison between the two, like, which, which would be better all the way around. Um, for what they offer and also like price wise too. Yes, if you can find that.
Um, I know I wanted to mention the bingo thing because there's been several people for whatever reason popping the bingo. Hey, I got that bingo. Hey, I got that bingo. So that it's like random wherever I'm at. So it's something that like people are talking, kind of maybe something you wanna look. Earlier than winter time to do. Um, I know sometimes. You know, and amongst other things.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely do that. I know one of the things we were thinking winter is just because spring, summer, people outside. Like I know I, I would love to go. Like, and I did a couple of times at SNS that they had it and it was really fun. Those are in winter. Whereas now, like, if I could be outside. I'm gonna be outside.
That's the only reason why I say that. Or maybe.
Vacation.
I mean, I guess over. They go. How to do them. So for them, maybe. It could be a different time of year, but it does seem to me you get, uh, more people in.
I think that we just need to check because I remember talking about doing a bingo.
The legality of it.
Yes, yes.
And whether it's considered gambling.
And I did, I have to look. I did look into that. And. I think. If I remember correctly, because it was kind of a while ago, there's kind of a way around it. There's a loophole.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And if the loophole, the combination of gambling and alcohol, I mean, is that the?
I don't know. I just remember.
Don't remember. And I remember it was funny because I asked Shayna at SNS about it and she's like. Oh, I don't know. Like they're, they're, they're just so go with the flow, like. They don't know. They don't care. It's almost like what they don't know is kind of, yeah. So, but yes, I'll look further into that as well. That's, and that would be outside. I think you, we need ideas. Yes.
True.
Oh, I was already gonna do catch a truck.
I, I don't know. I don't do it anymore because financially it doesn't work because. To get it done, but, uh, we had probably. I mean, two. We had about, we had about a good sixty, seven people come to us. And that was like in the middle of things, right? You know, it was a murder mystery.
I'm wondering though, is, I mean, understanding about the places that we can walk around and. Seems like you want something that's kind of like.
Well, they just had, they just had in the main hall and whatnot and it really didn't, it wasn't, they didn't use.
So it was not really.
Well, they could.
Do you pay extra to be there?
A whole truth, and you give people cards, they guess who the murderer is.
That sounds fun.
I mean, it, it's, I mean, I can give more information if you want, but I mean. I did several events for optimism.
Tailored to the library, like, you know, murder the library, murder the stacks or something that's like.
We would do that. We would give out character things to people who wanna play the characters and do like an interactive murder mystery. Um, and, and so I don't know what people would buy into more, but I know that like the ones that I've been to, you get. Get a character and you're that person. Nobody knows who the murderer is except the one organizing it or running it. And, and everybody plays their part. It's fun.
Um, and I think.
It's, it's fun.
What you had mentioned too, and I have to ask her again, like. They're hard to kind of pin down with things. So Shayna at SNS had said that they had somebody or a group or something and they were gonna do. Um. One. Or, or do two, one possibly to benefit something, some group, organization. And that's kind of how the conversation came up. So I need to follow through her because if that was the case, then that would be really easy. We would just go and have fun and we would get some money from it. So I can add, but I think we need to.
It used to be places that did that. Restaurants would do it or something. We're gonna give ten percent of Snatch Brothers to this day and you would have people in. Would do the ten percent right off the discount.
Yeah. Because they, they have a space upstairs and it seems like they always have, like sometimes they're closing the place down to people and they were very, um. Um, generous when I went over there and was.
How big is their space upstairs? Just out of curiosity.
Up there, but it looks like it's not small.
Like size, like. Like size of.
Maybe the community center, I mean, a lot in upstairs floor, but you know, I haven't been. I can't.
Okay. I think it's good for us to kind of look at all our options for places.
So how's the best way to, uh, move forward on this? Are you guys? So how's the best way to, uh, move forward on this? Um, are you guys?
We need to meet.
Good to meet? Do you need, do you need information from other people with fielded ideas? Like, do you need concrete?
I think first we might need to meet just because it's been a while.
Remember, depending that we have thousands of things through the calendar and, and, um.
I guess, I, I guess. Yep, and I guess the, the first thing too is if, because if we're gonna look at time wise, what would be coming up first, it would be the barbecue. So we need to kind of look through that and get some ideas and then not to put pressure on you. We would have, if we are gonna do that, coordinate with one of those dates. And I guess at the same time. I can contact Shayna because she didn't, like there was no. Saying it's timeframe, if it was something during the summer or one day planned on doing that. So I can ask her about that.
What about this? What about when we did, uh, I mean, if it works out, it sounds like it's gonna be financially beneficial to us. If we timed it at the same time as we had the new residents. So the new residents become, get their barbecue, listen to music, there'd be sort of a bigger event. And we don't have like millions of things going on instead of spending our entire lives.
Yeah. And were you saying? During the.
Coordinating it for the July day.
The barbecue.
Yes, the barbecue and then the musician. Welcome. So that they can come learn about everything in town, see the.
That's a good idea.
New barbecue.
We also do have kids events too, so that we can draw on the families, have that happen before the barbecue, then families can either stay or leave with their.
That's a good idea. Do something for the kids too, yeah.
And if we get some of those people pre-ordering.
Maybe do like a summer event.
It helps.
Right?
The, it helps balance the fundraising versus program. So like. Not like what we're trying to do with fundraising.
Yep, yep.
But this is just like.
Yeah, I like that. An add on.
Combined hopefully that would all go.
Yeah, and if you work the timing to like choose then barbecue.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So we're kind of hitting everybody. Yep.
Did you have a date? I don't.
I started thinking it was like July twentieth or something, but, um.
We did have a date for, for this.
For the new resident.
Oh, okay.
And definitely July.
Well, we decided we did.
Sorry, Logan's here to pick up.
People that are proud, people that are around the library, who that looks really interactive and, you know. People that are like traveling in class, he's in a bathroom either. It's a visual.
Yeah.
You know, piece for.
So the last new resident brunch was on June, July twenty first.
Yeah.
Well. That was, that was Sunday last year.
I think that.
Another concern is that as a new resident, it's nice to have like. Like new resident things make new residents come, but not the older residents who've been here, you know, as, as long. So it's a nice mingling.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so those new resident events have been really good that way that people come and. Um, but that'll, there's more people.
Um, it seems like we got some focus then. Yep, so to kind of backtrack real quick, since I know we're probably going over time. So, um, just with trivia, you can see on there our profit and.
It's great. I mean, that seemed like. Not much efficient.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering.
Effort and although I think some of you took. Picture, thank you.
But maybe like, I'm just curious like about if we've heard any feedback. I mean, from what I heard. I heard from the ladies at the community center, a couple of my friends there, I had stopped in to see them. And they just were raving about it. They had such a good time.
Yeah, I had a very nice, fantastic time. Um, I heard from the group that. W- w- one of my book groups, um, that won the first round, but they didn't really get any acclaim for it. Because they gave the money back, so they wanted there to be like they stand up or they're, or they're, you know.
Or maybe do we thank the people at the end who, uh, thanked people who turned the money back in? I don't know if we did that or not, but. Oh, we did, okay.
I mean, they tried to tip me, so.
But what do you guys think about the space there? Like, you sure, they're great to work with.
To screw out everything, so it's a problem for people here. Um, so, you know, they love Scott, but they. Maybe, maybe we just have them play during the cocktail hour and then in between things and not.
So when, when was it too mu- like I, I wasn't really paying attention. Oh, like while, while you were reading?
No, well, some live. He would do a little background music.
Gotcha.
But I thought we, I think we thought that kind of thing would help with.
But help, but help kind of like, you know, if you didn't want to be dead. You're like.
And you know, maybe that wasn't.
Oh, yeah.
I also sort of, this is my perspective. I felt like people were really anxious to. Do the trivia and wanted more trivia and they probably would have been perfectly happy. Like, like my friend said, oh, he had no idea that there's actually a meal coming out. We thought that we were just having these, um, nachos and we were going to town with the nachos and now, oh my God, here's a. So we could probably do with.
Maybe in future.
Less than more, yeah.
Too less. And also too, I don't think it said, um, it, um. When we were advertising it, like I know it just said, please drink by SNS. So, so maybe that's why people weren't sure, maybe. I don't know.
And anyway, I think we could probably do fewer less and maybe get the faculty to get more.
Yeah, yeah, more trivia, definitely.
I thought, I was like, oh, it's still down.
Oh, that's hysterical with the GD Google.
Well, I mean, I don't think we need to.
Try for more controversy or anything like that, but I mean, it didn't.
I wouldn't stretch that, it was just like, okay.
I missed the whole thing. That's why I stayed in the kitchen.
Mail, mail. No hope.
There's people who suggested maybe lots of many questions about, there's only.
Yeah.
Much though, and that people were putting in the answer and they were, they were Googling.
Yeah.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
And then once the Googling started.
Yeah.
Which actually too, they were Googling during the trivia?
Yeah.
I thought there were people after.
I think once they heard the answers, they were.
Yeah, because that was this, they have, um, something else, but then they Google it. They don't really, we are right. I think whales are also.
There's a team named Pangolin, they're very upset that we didn't mention them.
Yeah, so we have to be a little more.
And then fewer animal kingdom questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if we put out a survey that would.
Yeah.
It's moving forward, so.
Yeah, I just need to get email addresses of people.
And I don't think there were that many who didn't, so I can find out for you.
Very, very good job of the committee was.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah.
You could blame the house feedback cards at whatever it's you do.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I think you have to consider who you're gonna attract with these different kinds of events, like the trivia people are pretty hardcore. Trivia people, you know, like, so they are less concerned about the food, but also they want the trivia to be awesome.
Right, yeah.
So I think often we're like, like, you know, like they're ready to like, and if it's something that you just don't. It's one animal, but whatever. It's not like trivia, trivia that they're gonna, you know, like people who watch Jeopardy, you're not gonna know, something like that. It's like something that they. These are people that memorize a bunch of like random information, stuff like that, so. Once again, there were like twenty questions and the highest, highest combined score was like fourteen. So once again, that was a good question. The second round was very different from the first round though. There was a lot of, they only got like one or two questions. Yeah, that was.
Yeah, it might be once, like whoever swishes out the question, circulate them without the answers. So we have a bet, like, because if the answers are there, they don't look that.
Yeah.
If they're not there, they. Not that, I mean, people are smarter or whatever, but I mean, just it might help us.
Yeah. Definitely. Can I, can I just go back to one thing before? So you had mentioned.
And they, they did one, uh, couple, last, last summer where. Levon and Daley, the National Association did one at the Badford Pavilion and it was like eighty people showed up. I mean, you know, I don't know how, how it's run.
I mean, I don't know anything. I don't, I never played it before.
And it's highly competitive though and some people get a little bit.
Rowdy?
A little bit rowdy, depending on if there's.
You're in a rowdy part of the world.
Yes.
Alcohol.
People have to bring their own cooler. I mean, I wouldn't serve alcohol at. They want to bring their own cooler, that's fine. I wouldn't serve alcohol. As you said, town, town tavern tomorrow.
So do we be thinking about saving out the whole of barbecue?
And most of our kids that also. They don't even, it's great, so somebody just get a styrofoam.
All right, well. Now, we are really, are you comfortable just about going to Reno? They have thought financials, going up to fourteen.
What about the press release? I don't know.
Oh, sorry. No, well, that's, oh, yeah, right there. No, no, I'm clearly disorganized. It's right in front of me and I'm passing by. We want to get feedback on, um, the press release for. The children's renovation. We're trying to, uh, walk the line of. Hey, this is a great thing. Hey, it's not that big of a deal. Hey, we got a lot of money for it, you know, you know. Anyway, we're not spending a lot of money, uh, spending.
And I'd like to word this tomorrow, the first second.
Because.
This, this, it's a renovation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're downplaying it and.
Yeah. It is a big thing.
Seventy thousand dollars. I mean, not, maybe not to, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had different versions of it, some of.
I was excited, yeah.
Exciting, something, small.
I like an exciting.
Well, it's definitely not minor.
No, it's not.
I mean, like saying something like due to the. Um, due to the New York State Division of Library Development Grant, we are now under, you know, undertaking. The renovation of, except it is something we're excited having received a grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't wind it down, play the.
A need for it.
None of the personal donation because that's really.
Well, I think you're more just talking about, I'm sort of essentially starting with the second.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Review your renovation.
Yeah.
The grant, the grant is exciting, this renovation is.
And it's not actually a press.
Well, there's no more press, there's no more press.
Yeah, and it's not a press release.
It'll go out.
To the numbers?
It'll go out through the, to the email list. And I mean, we could put it into the, I could submit it to the Troy Record or to the. Berkshire Eagle or something, but who knows whether or not they'll actually be right for that. Yeah, really, it's email list and then it'll go on Facebook.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and on the website.
Well, I think if it's for the membership, you might want to use more like we. Kind of stuff. I mean, if it's for people who are cardholders, that's, that's the main audience that I might be, you might want to make it a little more inclusive, like our library and. You know, you do more of that kind of stuff.
So I'm not to send, once it's done and with approved, it will not go out to the usual press list.
We're just hardly.
I mean, I know there's hardly any on left, but there are still like five or so. That, you know, bounce back. Right, Troy Record, Berkshire Eagle, County Union. Who else? The advertiser?
They're done too, aren't they?
Oh, I don't know. I haven't sent anything to them in a long time.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The E-clip is gone. Uh, Grow the Valley. Uh, Troy Record, Times Union.
Organization around Grow the Valley.
I don't think so.
It's like they're changing. Josh, that was the last one he was doing, is the, with these town communities it's taking on.
I, Berkshire. Columbia, news, news at Columbia paper, the advertiser, I can guess that bounced back to him. So, so he's looking the advertiser out, but I thought the rest of them, so.
I didn't realize it was up to Columbia too, absolutely.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think, I see more of our. Event things, but the, Berkshire Eagle will put it as.
Okay, so we'll do a rewrite, um. We need to get approval on it once we get, have a rewrite or just?
I think just incorporate.
Chase it up, let them know it's not small and that we got it planned. Yeah, that's why you were. That, that was why you wanted to downplay it, so it didn't look like we're all plush and ready to ask for more money.
All right, so shall we? We won't be able to hide it, we won't be able to hide the renovation part much longer.
The thing is, the renovation was. Taking money for that for a year. I mean, I have a. Exactly, exactly. More, more, you know, more about the future and what have you done in our past.
So I think that's a good, she's right, move to that spot.
Okay, we had a mini meeting. Uh, real issues, I mean. At this point, we need to give it up. Age where we do this, we need to. Age where we do this, we need to. Uh, catch resolutions. One, in anticipation that whatever we do will be above two percent cap. What you can do in order to do it. And to basically authorize. The board could authorize the submission of petitions. To increase the amount of the two assessment. For the library. Um, I think the real issue you need to decide here is, what are the numbers for them? When we were talking about the numbers, when we were talking. Um. We don't need to commit to doing this on a yearly basis, uh, our headsman recommends that we do it on a yearly basis, every two years. The last one we did was during twenty eighteen. That is, it's been a full month. The town wants, uh. Give him a spot forty-five thousand. But to get, what are approval, moving to the.
Ninety-five.
I mean, ninety-five for.
Ninety-five for, yep, that's ninety-five. No, ninety-five thousand. Well, that's, that's the amount we get in the check every year, so.
There's not much disagreement about, we need around fifteen grand.
And, and it's not, uh, as we hit on it, we're not pulling the number out of the. The air, um, we're. But, uh, I mean, it reflects what we anticipate, we've got the shortfall, capital. Um, so, it, it, it's just fine tuning.
And the assumption was we can do that with a senior every six months.
The benefit of doing it on a more regular basis is that you can do the more, um, tolerable, um, you know, one, two, three percent, whatever, that reflects. Just the increases in, um, inflation and things like that, instead of having a really big jump like we're doing now, which looks. It's harder for people to swallow, um, even though it really only reflects, essentially, had we been having these regular increases, we would have. It would have helped us keep up, and we'd be at the same place right now, so.
That votes pass, is that affecting, impacting adversely the town's. Situations, and I say that because in the, in the last week or two, the banter over Lebanon and Berlin has not been favorable at all. And so if they tank their, if they tank their votes next week, are we really being realistic in asking now for them to look at the, the library?
This is a lot smaller net increase compared to the fifteen percent than in Lebanon. Because they're telling me my taxes will basically double.
And that's often, on the second, it's not another, they did it again, increased.
Yeah, last year as well.
Yeah, but not this one.
Right.
I think because the timing is different.
It's important to realize that net on taxes.
Our vote isn't there ever, whereas they're delayed, so we might have time. It won't be too effective.
That's why I can eat out for twenty dollars or something.
I mean, you're only, you're only increasing people's taxes like. Where you're saying, these things in Berlin, rather than our earth shattering. To anybody on fixed income, uh, people in this part. So I mean, and I agree that there's been a lot of real bad putting back about it. I mean, I can't wait to see what the seniors all freak out about tomorrow, but that won't be long.
So I think, I think you're right, that it's a reflection of sort of the mood.
Right.
That we should be aware is out there, but if we can make the argument that we haven't. Asked for this number of years, the impact on each individual is quite small.
Yeah.
And the benefit of blah, blah, blah.
I think a round number like fifteen thousand makes sense, fourteen, three does have a lot of. We used to, we used to submit budget requests every year to the town, and they would give us the increase, we would ask for an increase based on these costs. They would usually do it to us.
I mean, this is.
But I go under no obligation to do that. I know that, but you could, you could say, this is how it used to work, we used to get this increase.
When you said twenty-eighteen?
Twenty eighteen, three, four, four, the end of the year.
I am sort of like, very similar to what we did yesterday.
Oh, we were only getting half the.
We're getting. Ninety-four, eight, seventy-one.
We definitely get ninety-five.
I wouldn't even mention that on the information.
That would, that could be a look at that.
Really?
Yeah.
It's.
Round it up.
It's in money, I don't know, bad money.
That doesn't sound right.
Yeah. So we need a. Level, or the amount.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I got the language for here. We need to have two separate motions, one dealing with putting it on the ballot, and one going over the.
So the going over the cap, tax gap, why don't we go ahead and.
The first one.
Uh, right, yeah. Well, um, do you want to go ahead with that one, because I don't think there's anything relevant. Yeah, Scott, so, can we get a, can we get a motion to?
I'll give you a motion, advocate.
Scott made it.
I'm motion.
It's.
I'm only going to word it, I'm going to hear it.
Very good.
But I'm just that.
Actually, I think you have a motion right here. That's.
This is a standard example.
Oh, never mind.
I am the.
So Scott has made the motion, who has a second now?
Yeah, they made the motion yet.
I don't make the motion.
Just say, man, if they did a motion, just as a. Yeah, Scott just made a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. All right, let's go.
I'm.
He's going to give you that.
We require a tax notice that exceeds the tax law imposed by state law. As outlined in the General Municipal Law, Section Three C. Adopted in twenty-eleven, and. Whereas General Municipal Law, Section C three expressly limit the library board to override the tax levy limit by a resolution from Bible. Fifty percent of qualified board members. Now, the, the result, that the Board of Trustees of Even Town Library. Hereby approve the override of the tax levy limit. For the year twenty-twenty-six, and granted by General Municipal Law, Section C. Provided that at least sixty percent of the board of qualified board members produce such override. So that's what the motion is going to be. Do I hear a second? We're not deciding.
I just have to cancel it.
Whereas Liz has seconded.
Exactly.
And you just.
Okay, uh, all, all in favor?
I.
The true request is.
Who's qualified on this board? We don't usually.
Anyone who's like.
Check your pulse.
It's not, if you've done that, I don't. So we need a certain thought about. Just for keep the information, more than twenty-five signatures. About twenty here, but probably, we can talk about doing the petition. But before we worry about that, we should probably just get a motion, we decided the number, we're going to go with fifty?
I say fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe you can also scan it in the. Nope. Oh, okay, I'm.
I think, uh, I'm not sure, strategy wise, which one, you know, which one makes sense and all that, I mean, I, I. In terms of the larger question of, you know, would, would it make sense to ask for a smaller amount? The problem with that is, I think we would have to do that based on a concrete plan that said, well, the reason we can ask for that amount is because we're cutting a specific. Thing, and that's what is going to allow us to have this amount of money make up our operating, um, account, so. Outside of that, I think, um, you know, our argument is if we do not get this funding, then we are going to be looking at cuts, and we have talked about some of the where, places where that would happen. Um, and we're going to have to see through that unless we come up with, unless barbecues and, and, uh, and.
Cornhole.
And bingo and things really, really pay off, but otherwise, I mean, given what we're projecting and what we've seen, you know, this is where it's going to be. Uh, and I think that's sort of the question that we're looking to the community, you know, like. Do you feel like how things are running right now and all that, if not, and if we don't get this, then there, you're probably going to see a difference in what we can provide.
So the, the total annual is a hundred and ten thousand, is it correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
If we get ninety-five, then.
And I think that it hasn't been increased in so long, it's really a, a big selling point.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, between inflation and that many years and. Now, and it's not really going to bump up. Like individually very much. Because I think I asked a lot, the, maybe when they were here presenting, like, what does that mean for the aritomo? Like, how much is that really going to be?
And we will be able to get that specific number, working with the assessor.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not very much.
Relatively much. What's been the contact with the town board on this so far?
I don't think we have.
Was there any thought of asking for fifteen thousand dollars to? Without doing the. The four-fourteen thing?
I think that puts the, it too much in their, like, they could give it to us one year and then not the other, we need to have, make sure that we're out of steady funding, so. I would say that we should just.
No, we have to get the liaison, which is.
Oh, okay.
What is it?
Uh, I think.
I was sending you, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We both go to the meetings or cover for each other, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can see if they want to do that, I mean, at the same time, though, this is not new, this is just asking for an increase, so maybe. They may see it as.
We'll talk in a day.
Yep. Um.
I think stuff like. If we were to get the vote, it's something to base, you know, supplement. To afford it, you know what I mean, like, we could have those kind of discussions.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I think if there was, if this did not, if this doesn't go through, and we're looking at specific things, we might be able to, that, they, i- if they wanted to help with. You know, teen and youth programming or something that's kind of more critical, just like. Can they, can you help, help with sponsoring the, these programs?
Still have the workshop meeting?
No, oh, well, they don't really have it this year.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Okay, well, as ad hoc, as needed.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Some situations, a little bit.
I mean, they're very. Happy to chat, you know. Okay, so we're at fifteen thousand.
So I need a motion now. Signatures, petition. And giving the. And so, I'll move that Board of Trustees authorize the collection of signatures on a petition seeking to place. A home question to be voted on at the next general election, the town of Stevington. Shell, the annual contribution of the Stevington Town, of Town of Stevington Town. For the operating budget of the Stevington Town Memorial Library be increased from. By, be increased by fifteen thousand dollars, the sum of a hundred and ten thousand dollars annually. And further. Then on the receipt by the Board of Trustees of such petition or petitions varying. At least the required number of signatures. That such petition or petitions be submitted to the Town of Stevington Town or Trace Bill. To the Rensselaer County Board of Elections, so that the above stated question should be voted on. General election, Town of Stevington.
Thank you.
This call to.
Such a tough.
Crazy.
You must have done it a million times. Okay, so is there any second? Is there a second? Any discussions? All in favor?
Make a. Um. Up where the government needs to talk with the town. Um. We need to put together a, 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 like, I mean, another talk. If we need, probably do add to the fact sheet. What we need to grant store and what it wants to.
Did you, um, bring the, what you shared at the committee meeting?
Yes.
Oops, did I, was it?
The fact sheet then? Yeah, I have a copy of the.
Okay.
You want the fact sheet?
I got it, thank you, I actually probably have the one for the committee meeting. I do, actually, I have a committee meeting. So I think, uh, you didn't, you didn't edit it from the meeting, did you? Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, a couple of things, in addition to what Scott just mentioned in terms of adding what it covers and what happens if we don't, we also thought we could mention some things of where, where we've been able to find some savings with volunteer efforts. You know, bookkeeping, landscaping, um, some, some of the programs. Um, adding in that household value, you know, what, what it means per household, um, we get that number, and. Let's see what else is in there here. I think we've had some other little small tweaks, but generally, in terms of what else we thought we could add to this. Uh, and I think it's important that we kind of get this. Settled soon, because as soon as this is public, you know, we could be getting questions, and we could be on the same page of how we're talking about it, so. Right. And as we mentioned, the big, big change, the big change is really. To know we've had that increase in the range, um, and a big driver of the increase in costs.
You know, I. Yeah, true.
Okay, I, I.
You know, what I mean, what I plan to do is do all the, I'll.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we have like, like, a lot of recommendations, but I think, I mean, it's.
I mean, probably what, I.
I'm sorry.
It seems like, wouldn't we need the Q and A? It seems like, wouldn't we need the Q and A, um, the sort of talking points before we get to some activities? Or? Like, has something?
I I think we want that in it. Yeah, I think we want it filled up. We're, at any time, we're going to be talking to people. We are. Same page.
My experience is, I don't think it's. I think it's probably better to get right together, but frankly, darn, like, discussion.
Yeah, we just don't want to cut flat footed, put some, you know.
I'm not, I'm not arguing, but basically. It's like, we need the money. In the wild.
We need the money.
The expenses are high.
Yes.
We can't petition people here at the library. Correct?
You know what? I don't know the answer to that question. The library staff should be involved, trustees can be.
Okay, I thought you said that people, we did it in the building. Last time. I I couldn't.
I I think it's actually.
There are a lot of weird, weird rules.
Well, yeah, there's a distinction between the library and the library can't spend money on it. It can't advocate for it. It can just basically provide land and permission. The trustees can go whole hog and do it, whatever we want. The volunteers can do it.
We had information meetings itself, so we could. We couldn't campaign.
Yeah, I know. Well, okay, so.
We'll finalize the Q and A at the next four fourteen meetings. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
When is that?
June, I think.
No, I'm sorry. Are you interested, are you stuck? It's not the thing. Um, are you interested in helping with the? With that? Uh, or you can tell me later, I'm playing on the spot. When is the next meeting?
June third. January first.
June third.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, we didn't have that one too.
We want to at that point, then also set the schedule and the plan for. Who's going to be the petitioning and when and how I'm going to do that.
Yeah, it's gonna need you always.
The real challenge is whether you.
Yep, like, I agree. I think we should try to, yeah.
It's the county meeting.
Mm-hmm, right. So I think if we can, yeah, just kind of divvy it up of who's got a connection where and decide on the. Plan.
I mean, I think. Uh, we could speak to, um. Democrats. Indivisible, I mean, the Republicans, not. Not. It shouldn't be. Republicans obviously supporting.
Right.
The library as well.
Yeah.
I mean, different people have different approaches about taxes and all that stuff.
Right, sure.
Whether you want to pay for it or not, it's your issue. It's not, or it shouldn't be.
But this isn't a, I'm paying for it, this is what I think it should be. You know, you can have to be, yeah.
Yeah, but ultimately, you're actually right, but ultimately, the determination is like tax, like taxes, don't like taxes. Sort of yes, but. My experience with this particular thing is the people who do want to. Pay for it or interested in signing. Let people be opportunity.
Last time, there was actually an active anti.
Yes.
Four fourteen group that went and told people, like, made up a whole bunch of fake numbers and went door to door and campaigned against it. Said it was going to be to raise the taxes a million dollars.
I forgot about that.
Yes.
Yeah, I would imagine, I think they didn't, I, we.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of very weird numbers being thrown around.
Yeah, they actually went door to door.
Yeah, people were campaigning against it.
Which is why it didn't pass very, very much. It was what?
About forty votes, maybe?
Thirty, yeah, thirty, forty, something like that.
You're the eighty lead, they don't want to do another town. Probably, they don't listen.
We have got a different version that works.
And that was only.
That was a lot more money you talked about.
A lot more money and.
Totally changed.
All right, so June meeting, we're gonna, uh, have three priorities. Finalizing the information sheet, I think, use time points. Uh, we will put together the specific plan for the petition, who's going where, to what groups. When, and, um, we'll have the update from telling the town board, so if there's anything to. Talk about that. Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All righty, anything else on four fourteen? Okay, next up is our new business, which is we have to. Elect our officers because we didn't do that during the annual meeting. Various reasons, so, um, I did reach out ahead of the meeting to see if our current officers were willing to continue to serve in their roles. Um, and they are, I don't know if anyone's changed their mind after tonight, but, or after my emails, but.
Fifteen minutes to convince them.
I, I, I took your feedback and said, you're right. That was why I was the opposite. Anyway. All my, I'm like a lead balloon. Uh, so, uh, so we need to just talk to, go ahead and let them. I am going to just say, I'm going to see through these projects this year as president, but it's going to be my last year as president, so. Plan accordingly or or vote me out tonight, too. That's okay. But. I'm going to focus on my email writing. Uh, so, does anybody else, anybody else want to put themselves out there for any of the roles? So we've got president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. Everyone has already taken, I know everyone has taken on the non-officer roles as well in terms of the committee, so. It's, it's not. Everybody is doing very hard. It's a thankless role, isn't it? Did you watch that show Beef, you know? Uh, okay, so, uh, I will make, or no, I guess I shouldn't. Who should make the motion? Scott? That's what I was going to do, but I mean, can I do it?
I'm on it.
Sure. All right, make a motion that, uh, we. Elect the slate of current officers to be the officers for the. April twenty twenty-five through. Excuse me. What are we in? Yeah, May twenty twenty-five through April. Twenty twenty-six. Can I get a second? All right. All in favor?
All right.
Yeah. Does anybody have any other new business?
And added front.
And then ask for more money.
That the house across from town hall, by the way, um, those will affect in the yard tiles and do any more property and such, but. Uh, tounded by that house and it's coming down. Soon. And they have. You know, I don't know if they've decided what they're going to do with the extra, um, space yet, but. Just as a reminder.
Any, any idea at all? Do you think they're just going to try to put a place for people to fall?
I. I think they're, I don't know. I mean, it sounded like there was just different ideas, perhaps parking, maybe, uh, maybe something like a playground, maybe something more of a community type. Trying to tie the, this area together as a little community center. Um, I think, I think, you know, there's. Different options on the table.
Or another third.
Well, it's probably most likely at this point. Any old business we didn't cover? Okay, correspondence, I think we have just sent it all out by email. I don't think there's anything else. All right.
I made a motion to the term.
Thanks, everybody.